Well, you know, I don't even need a microphone. Hello, I'm Marsha Herbert, President of the Board of Education. On behalf of the Board, I would like to welcome the members of our delegation and our county commissioners to this joint meeting. We appreciate the opportunity to come together well in advance of the legislative session to talk about the issues and challenges we are facing. As you all are aware, our most pressing issue is the blueprint for Maryland's future. While we recognize the blueprint will benefit our students in many ways, it is presenting us with challenges and heartburn. We will ourselves in unprecedented, we find ourselves in unprecedented times. This new school year is going to present us with even more struggles and we need your support and we really do need everyone's support in this room. It is our sincere wish that the outstanding working relationship, open communication, and meaningful dialogue we have developed will continue. When we are able to come together and work to find solution, it sends a clear message to our community that the education of our students is a top priority in Carroll County. I would now like to turn things over to our Superintendent, Dr. McCabe.
Good evening. And before I get started, please know that there are refreshments in the back, so please feel free to eat and drink as we discuss tonight. I share Ms. Herbert's welcome and appreciation that we have this opportunity to gather and continue the conversation on the impact of the blueprint, well in advance of next year's General Assembly. In some ways, this discussion began last November at our delegation meeting and has continued throughout the FY24 budget development process and in our joint meetings between the Board of Ed and the commissioners. There's no doubt that the blueprint will bring significant impact in our schools and will challenge the county's resources. So the more engaged we remain in our discussions, the better we may collectively understand the impact, work on it together, and inform our schools and community. Last year, we began that work of informing the school communities through a series of town halls that we did. The Board of Ed members and commissioners co-signed, just co-signed a letter to the Carroll delegation in advance of this meeting. Hopefully, that helped frame some of the main issues facing our schools. We have also on the agenda some informational handouts in your packets that we would like to use to guide the discussion today. We thought we'd focus on the main topics of the status of the blueprint implementation, the upcoming timelines, and then the challenges that the blueprint implementation will give us this year. With your agreement, I'd like to ask Mr. O'Neil and Mr. Shachny to share the details of the handouts and we would definitely be interested in your questions and your comments as we move through.
Good evening and thank you for being here. You have a packet of various documents and I would just say, we consider most of these documents to be in an ongoing draft format because we're editing them and making some revisions and there's a few here that the commissioners would have seen at the Board's most recent joint meeting. Even those have some minor refinements to them. I think at the same time or throughout the meeting, Ms. Bowers is able to show them on the screen to whatever extent that helps the discussion. Nick and I don't have any intention of sort of presenting them section by section or word for word, just maybe hit some highlights and as Dr. McCabe said, stop us, ask questions. But our main goal is to get to your discussion, your questions, and then I think kind of leave tonight with some items that maybe the Board of Ed could consider draft legislative positions or, you know, hopefully, most people would consider reasonable measures that could be taken, that could be undertaken either in the General Assembly or in policy. So with that being said, the first document in the packet is sort of the update on the status of things that Dr. McCabe said. I think sort of some good news there is that we and all of the other 24 counties or local Boards of Ed received notice from the AIB on July 27th that our initial blueprint implementation plan was approved. All counties were approved, a handful were approved with conditions or conditionally, we were approved. So, you know, the good news there is by law, the AIB starts out by withholding 25% of your new state aid to education and once you're approved, then that's released. So we know for the current fiscal year, we're fiscally solid all the way through and that's a bit of good news. And we also know that we anticipate within a couple of weeks, the template for next year's plan and we'll start working on that immediately. And then the rest of that sheet kind of highlights some of the major blueprint timelines, the things that are on the horizon, kind of drive the discussion about the challenges and how that leads to sort of fiscal challenges or fiscal complications. And again, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna go bullet by bullet, but fiscal '25, so the budget year we'll begin planning for next, is the year where we still believe we'll be accountable for full fiscal compliance. And that means making sure that all of the blueprint money, both the state shares and the local shares, are spent at the school level in the restricted categories that they come to us through. And that really gets to the heart of the town hall meetings that Superintendent McCabe mentioned that she conducted in the spring with the community. That's where barring some other, some other guidance from the state, we believe we're gonna have to realign resources, meaning staffing in many cases from certain schools into other schools so that the state can read our reports and say, okay, they're spending that money where the children are. And we usually, we usually turn that conversation into the compensatory ed money because that's the biggest amount. That's about 37 million approximately of resources that Superintendent knows we're gonna have to adjust as we move into fiscal year '25. And I think probably sort of the benchmark we all have in mind is that by the winter, Mr. Shachny, my colleague here who oversees school administration and our educational program, it'll probably be roughly at the end of the calendar year or mid-school year where we'll begin to have our plans at the school level and maybe even public to say, this is what we think it will look like when those resources shift. And I know the superintendent shared sort of like a general glimpse at her town halls of what it might mean for staffing in this school versus that school. It will be real in the winter and that's when Mr. Diaz, our Director of HR, will have to be working with our employee groups and our employees to say, this is what the transfer process might look like and that sort of thing. So fiscal '25 is the compliance year. Fiscal '25 is also the year where the career ladder has to be approved, which means in advance it has to be negotiated through collective bargaining, it has to be funded, and then it has to be approved by the AIB. We assume, and it's a bit of an assumption, but it's based on what they've been saying at their meetings, we assume that that approval will come as part of next year's blueprint plan. I assume that they're gonna adjust the template of the plan to have the career ladder. And just from a timing standpoint, that's interesting because you have to bargain that and, you know, what if you're not bargained yet or what if it's not funded, that sort of thing. We have a rough estimate of the career ladder, of the cost to make the initial transition to the career ladder of approximately 4.5 million and we can go over that more if you want to later. So that's fiscal '25. Fiscal '27 is when the 60,000 minimum teacher salary has to be in place, so we have a couple of fiscal years to work to that. We're about 15% short right now if you take our scale and say, what would it cost to increase that scale so that the starting salary is 60,000? And if you take that 15%, that's about 26 million to fund that outright.
And John, that's across the whole scale, right? Because you can't just increase the minimum to 60,000, the whole scale's kind of gotta go with it.
Not comfortably, yeah. So the, and we could, there's a chart later with sort of a budget path, but we can, we can talk about that now or then. That 26 million is predicated upon, as Ms. Sevigny said, where, you know, our scale historically is sort of built upon percentages and if our starting teacher salary is a little bit more than 15% short of 60,000, it would take 26 million to move that whole scale by that percentage to maintain sort of the structure and the integrity. And then there's, and it shows better perhaps on the budget chart, but, you know, then there's sort of a compression impact to that. What does that do to the rest of your salary structure? If you take one group, your largest group, and adjust it that much? So that's on the, you know, we have the bridge to that, the due date is '27, we'll be working on that between now and then. The teacher time requirement that we talk about a lot and the premise of the blueprint is that on the career ladder, teachers in different levels of the career ladder will spend a certain percentage of their time in direct instruction or direct interaction with students and the balance of their time in other teacher-related professional activities. That requirement's an interesting one under the blueprint. It sort of begins in earnest in '25 and phases throughout the rest of the blueprint. And I've yet to get my mind around quite how that would look in real life, but our HR folks and our budget folks have done an initial analysis to say, okay, without worrying about how we phased that, what does that mean for staffing to just get to that initial? For most teachers, that's 60-40 time split. We estimate about 125 new teaching positions and so the superintendent and the Board have been trying to work on a plan where we would phase that in at about 15 new additional, new FTE or positions per year. In '23, we, in '24 rather, this fiscal year, we weren't able to fund that, so the '25 request would be 30 FTE. And then that phases in over time and so that gets a little more complicated. And then the last major area is pre-K expansion. That actually started in '23 and continues to bridge by 5% of the public-private partnership split. We're not very far along that path, as we've talked about in many meetings. The last time I updated this, we had, I think, three, and I think Mr. Wernick, our pillar one, early childhood team leader and our Director of Curriculum is here. We, is it still three, Steve? We have three private providers in Carroll County who have identified wanting to be part of this process, which is well short of what would be needed. And so the Board of Ed has been on a path which so far we've been able to maintain of trying to meet the public end of that by expanding all of our existing pre-K sites, which historically were half-day into full-day and that progress has continued in earnest for several years now. Beyond that, just to meet the Board of Ed's public part of the share, we have a capital request that's before the county or will be again in October to try to add physical space. So there's a capital component to a lot of this, this is one of those major areas. That doesn't take into account what if the private partnership never materializes. So that remains kind of a concern and a what-if out there on...
John, is that 50-50 a goal that the state put in place?
It is a component of the law, of the blueprint. And so it started in '23, Senator Reedy, and it should have been 35, the private component should have met 35 in '23. It obviously does not and it would graduate to 40% in '24, 45 until it hits 50.
To be clear, it's, the goal is 50% private folks doing it versus 50% the school system?
It would be slots for eligible four and three-year-olds that the Board of Ed would provide 50% of those slots for eligible four and three-year-olds and it's based on where you are relative to the federal poverty line. And so at three providers, where, I don't know if Steve, we have a podium, I think, for staff to come to. I don't know if Steve could tell you what percentage it would be right now.
It's okay, we don't have to get bogged down, I'm just curious.
Okay, and you said three providers?
Three.
How many students, how many children does that accommodate?
I'll ask Mr. Wernick to come to the podium.
Okay, sorry.
I will say, it's in here later, but I think it's better to...
Okay, sorry, I don't mean to get ahead.
No, no, that number's not delegate. What is in later and, but it's, I think it's better just to let the conversation flow is, this is one part of the blueprint where there is a built-in waiver. So the blueprint as enacted anticipated some issues here. There is a waiver, I think all 24 Boards of Ed are operating under that waiver for '24. I guess when we get to sort of legislative positions and needs, it's gonna be vital that that waiver continue and that the AIB and the State Department of Ed...
Don't change it.
...continue that waiver because we're not going to be there.
And daycare providers are not knocking down the doors to help, so there's nothing in it for them, so...
Yeah, there needs to be something in it...
There's no incentive.
...for them to want to participate.
And this may be totally jumping ahead and we could certainly go back to it. How has your interaction been with this AIB when you're talking about implementation of these? How's that interaction been, the communication?
Well, we, the communication we get from the AIB usually is in the form of being in meetings with them, correct, Mr. O'Neil?
Yeah, our interaction would mainly be with AIB staff.
Yeah.
So Director Heiss and her staff, I mean, they certainly hold public meetings and people can participate. We haven't participated a ton yet. There's been so much staff time, and I kind of didn't say this and I should have, I just said the plan was approved and I didn't say, a whole lot of people, including a lot of people sitting over there and a lot of people who aren't in this room, spent countless hours getting that approved through a two-tier process of, so our focus of time and energy was on getting that done and getting that done successfully. I would say that at the meetings, there are many meetings and I want to be careful and appropriate in how I share this. There are many meetings, there's an endless amount of meetings that one can attend in person and mainly in webinars. But they are building an airplane in flight, if I want to be fair. And so, you know, to be kind, I would say, there's a great need for guidance at the local level, specific guidance sometimes, and they're still gearing up to provide that guidance.
So there are meetings, but they may be meetings where the communication is going one way because they're still figuring out what maybe they need to do.
Perhaps, Senator, an acknowledgement of questions, but not a lot of answers to those direct questions. And I don't feel like I'm speaking out of school. If you, there were some recently and there was one on the career ladder. Career ladders may be the most complex and perhaps at the end of the day, if you consider salary as a whole costly element of the blueprint. And that was open to everybody, not just school system officials, unions, other interested parties. And there's a component, as with most of these meetings, where if you have questions, add them to the, you know, to the electronic place where you can put questions. And the last time I looked, one question had been answered and it was answered on the day of the seminar or the webinar. So, but I do want to be kind and fair, they've been, you know, it's, this is, we're reforming pre-K through 12 education on the fly. And I'm not sure that, you know, there were, in the most planful way imaginable, there were always gonna be glitches and this isn't the most planful way imaginable to undertake this. We're doing it as we go, they've been staffing, we have a lot of questions. I'm sure most of those questions, 24, they always call them LEAs, but county Boards of Ed would share, some would be unique. It's hard for them to manage that as well, but our deadlines never, never move. And I guess if I wanted to be snide, I would say, they move theirs when they need to. Our deadlines never shift and I sort of regret that, I said that, but that is sort of a reality.
No, tell the truth.
No, that's very true. You're being very diplomatic, John.
Yeah, I have a question and again, Mr. Wernick's gonna answer, I think, the delegate's question about number of students and maybe he can answer mine as well, but have you heard any feedback from providers that inhibit them or disincentivize them, that maybe they could take back legislatively and try to change to help more providers come in?
Absolutely. So up until this year, we had two private providers, which would have been two classes, one class in each private provider of 20 students, so you're talking 40 students. This year, we had another private provider enroll through MSDE and we now have an extra classroom, so it's 60 total students out of about, you know, we have about 480 students that we currently have in our current CCPS programs. We did have an open house to explain to private providers back in the early May timeframe, the incentives and all. The issue is that they would have to pay their teachers a comparative salary as CCPS and often they can't. They also have to provide the curriculum similar to what we provide, which is costly, as well as all the related arts. You're talking health, PE, music. And then the other concern is that, you know, you have a breakfast and a lunch program that they have to provide to some of these students. So everything that we provide as a school system, they would have to emulate.
And could I ask one follow-up? Is it also true that if they are, say, a Jewish day school or a Methodist daycare, they cannot provide the religious instruction? So if a religious or, I guess religious-based group is running a successful pre-K operation now, they can't really unless they dramatically change what they're doing enroll, correct?
That is correct. They would have to follow the state curriculum, which does not include that.
Okay. So another question.
Go ahead, Amy.
I'll rid your hand.
Yes, that's okay. Do you have any data prior to this implementation of the number of children and people that were serviced, that were able to provide these pre-K opportunities before all of these regulations? Do you have any data to compare? So you said we were 40, then we went to 60. Is that right? You said we had 40 that qualified?
Well, these are private providers, so we had two private providers. Yes, with two, yes.
So we had 40 private and then we added another 20 seats?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so we have 60. Do you know or do you have data on private providers that are available, that were available prior to these measures?
Correct. There are still many private providers. The problem is they have to be accredited through MSDE to fall into the pre-K program. And so, you know, not many of the providers are going through that process because it's really a two-year process to be accredited and they have to follow the steps that I shared earlier with salary and with a curriculum. So yes, there are multiple private providers and family providers in our school system that provide our students because again, pre-K is not mandatory unless the parent chooses to have it up to the 30% threshold above poverty.
And the other issue is those private providers who choose not to participate with us are having no problem filling their enrollment slots, so they're...
There aren't enough.
That's basically what I was getting at.
There aren't enough slots.
Right, okay.
It's difficult to find, you know, for daycare.
If I may follow up on that last comment, is there an auditing or review arm that's on go-to these providers? What's the follow-up to ensure that they're in compliance with all these requirements? Is that built into the system?
There is. There's an accreditation process through the Maryland State Department of Education that's a two-year process to become accredited, so they have review teams come out and make sure that you're teaching. And then every two years, you have to, again, go through that process to be re-accredited. Same with, same with our Carroll County Public Schools pre-K programs.
Beyond the two years, I mean, is it just initial, but does it follow up?
It's every two years.
Okay, all right, gotcha, thank you.
Delegate Rose?
Do we have a list of people who are trying to go through this process and where are those providers and where they stand?
We only have three that have gone through the process and they, correct.
Only three, that's it. No more.
So no one else has applied, right?
No one else has applied, no.
It's two owners.
Thank you very much.
So April, is the, is one of the questions, what you're asking was, how many seats are there being offered on a private basis right now for pre-K in the county?
Yeah, and is this, is this helping, harming? I mean, I think it's harming, but I mean, I just want to know...
In the past, we've been able to support the students that we needed to who wanted pre-K. I think what the state is looking at is eventually there's gonna be a sliding scale up to the 600% above poverty and we'll have to also include them eventually. The other concern is that in 2032, we'll have to start having all three-year-old programs following the same suit. So right now, we're fine with four-year-olds, but once we introduce three-year-old programs, we will not have the space. And so that's why they really wanted these private providers to begin learning, you know, how we follow curriculum so that they would then be able to take part in the three-year-old plus the four-year-old programs.
And so, you know, since I had the green light to speak freely, I guess here's how John views it, for whatever that's worth.
Thank you.
If I'm a private provider, if I'm running Justin Reedy daycare, I have no limit of people in line to want to be in my daycare. So I have to want to do this. And the payoff in the theory of the blueprint is that if I do this, the Board of Ed of Carroll County is gonna give me the per pupil allocation for each kid. And that, that sounds at face value like maybe that's a good deal, but, you know, Steve said, you have to, your teachers have to suddenly be certified. You're, you have to go through the Excel certification. You might have to make, even down to the level of, like, playgrounds have to be adjusted physically. And so, so then you say, is, in my business model, which is already successful, is that worth it to me? And I think what we're seeing so far is not. Now, my biggest, our biggest fear is what happens if that waiver stops being issued or if the reality becomes, if what we're seeing becomes everyone's reality and the AIB or whomever would say, well, that didn't happen, so then the Board of Ed's will provide all of the spots. Because we already have a capital commitment and every time we expand a half-day, a half-day class to full-day or add a full-day, there's, you know, there's a lot of staffing attached to that, there's transportation, there's a lot of different costs built into that. And I think, Senator, it also, to your question, what kind of dialogue, or maybe that was Delegate Rose, what kind of dialogue are you having? When you, you know, when others, us and others say at meetings, this is what we're seeing, this is what's happening, the challenge is always, go do more, have informational sessions with these, and this could be true of any, this is a microcosm of a bigger, have more informational sessions with your private providers. Let them know that we have startup grants at MSDE. Do they know that? Have you told them that? Tell us how many times you've told them that. Up to and including other Boards of Ed who are sending staff, like in our case, that would be, you know, April Rose daycare, just to try to get you to move forward. Here's two teachers that Carroll County Public Schools employees that Nick Shachny's sending you to get you to participate.
And we can't provide that.
We can't do that.
Yeah, absolutely not.
Frankly, we don't. Senator West?
Are you, are you talking to your, the other counties to see whether, is Carroll County unique having these problems or I would think all the counties would be having the same problems?
Not in this area, we're not. Everyone's in the same place in the area of pre-K. There are some unique aspects, I would say, for us. The biggest one would be the compensatory ed compliance issue. That's purely a Carroll thing, I think, relatively.
Because it would be easier for the legislators to make inroads in Annapolis if Carroll County isn't by itself, but if all the counties are sort of behind us.
Everybody is in one place. Another thing, I briefly mentioned it, like the disconnect between what the blueprint requires from a capital perspective that was never, I believe, really part of their consideration in development and enactment. It now is and the IAC has a task force that's studying this, studying the, sort of what are the capital needs of the blueprint. Our facility planner, Bill Kane, has actually been invited to be part of that task force, but it's a tad bit late when, you know, we expect to get guidelines probably at the conclusion of this General Assembly upcoming and that's wonderful, but we're two years into, you know, on the path towards 50-50 as well. So there's, you know, this, early childhood's a great example of all of the challenges, you know, converging with the blueprint.
Mr. Kyler.
Yeah, we, we were fortunate timing-wise just to have Mako and we're also very fortunate because of 140 and some of the things, we seem to be the shiny penny right now for the governor and lieutenant governor. Mako decided to have a somewhat emergency meeting of rural counties to talk about blueprint. Somebody put that on the schedule, so we had all-size counties and all kinds of people come to the meeting. Almost everyone sounded like this. And I think how we came out of a little bit is, and we can touch on that today, we're not capable of funding this. Now, I don't know that that's an excuse, but I think everybody at Mako said, we need to fight for local control. Montgomery County said, we want to fund it, we just raised taxes 10 cents, we want to, we're up to our limit now, we need to limit raise because we want to raise more taxes and keep funding this. And, but they said, we don't think we physically can. Anna Rundle was in there, Baltimore City spoke, a couple daycare people spoke and said, we can't afford to be 50-50. So we heard it from almost all counties and very similar arguments. And I think you guys are hearing it from more and more counties.
Yeah.
I thought the rural ones may all get along and some of the bigger ones would say, oh, that's your guys' problem. That's not the case now. It's surprising. And, and Mako's supposed to come up with some letters and, but I think it's, it's gonna be, you know, we want local control. Why, if Carroll County is doing well in some areas... Why, if Carroll County is doing well in some areas and Kerwin's committee thought this should be outcome-based, why do they need to spend money to fix something that's not broken? Now, in XYZ County, if that's broken, let's fix it. And it's, when I was on the other side of the fence and at Mabe, what you heard about was teachers' pay, the 60-40, a few of those things. You didn't hear about all the other things that almost make it hard to pay the teachers what you need to pay them because you're spending money so many other places. It's, you know, I said it then. Kerwin and the committee know more about education than I do, but they don't know anything about finance, and they don't know anything about implementation. And that's where we are. I saw on MSD's site, the goal of this is to increase funding for the State of Maryland for education, 3.8 billion each of the next 10 years. Now, you guys probably have that in Maryland. What's that?
The original estimate we got was 32 extra billion dollars every 10 years.
Yeah, yeah. So, now they're saying 38.
With that improved reading and that wasn't listed. It was just how much they were going to spend.
Now, you guys at the state probably have the money, but us counties don't.
And I will say, so I did speak with Commissioner Rothstein, who couldn't be here tonight. And Kenny, you, I don't mean to be informal, but that Mako is going to send a letter on behalf of all of the counties that we are all facing these many varied issues. And I know that we've talked many, many times. I know that this is something that has to be addressed. So, we obviously are going to have to revisit a lot of this. And a lot of it does go back to Commissioner Guerin reached out to us about local control, too. And that is 1 million percent the message that we need to send. And we need to be able, and we talked about this a year ago, that we have a certain amount of money, and we need to have the option to move it from these buckets to where it works for us. And it's not just us. It's every county. We all have different issues, and that's why you need the flexibility. There is not a one-size-fits-all when it comes to education. And I think everybody in this state wants our kids to have a great education. We want teachers to be paid well. We want to take care of our education system. We've got to be able to do it in a way that makes sense for us. So, I know that's maybe very esoteric and whatever.
No, but Blueprint has set this as a precedence now, and we have done quite well in all of our testing.
Absolutely.
Now, we're going to go backwards and have 40 kids in a class, students in a class, and do all this other ABC, which is going to harm us. Leave us alone. Just give us our money and do what we're supposed to be doing. And we have been very successful. And you can put our scores up to anybody's.
And I will say, and I said this a year ago, and this is back at the beginning of the Blueprint, they don't care about class size. Like, when they started, when Kerwin started this whole thing in Singapore and wherever else, you know, they don't care. They look at it like a college. Like, we're all going to sit in this big auditorium like a college, you know. But that's not going to work. So, that is not the answer. And now that we are, when the rubber is now meeting the road, we have got to come up with a way that we all speak together and push back on how we can implement this. There are a lot of very good things in Blueprint. I'm not trying, I'm not saying it's a horrible thing at all. I think our teachers should be paid well. I love the career development. I love, there's a lot of parts of it that I think are very, very good. But we have to do it in a way that is not, we can't turn around. Our commissioners cannot turn around and say, "We're going to double your property taxes next year to pay for this." We can't do that. We can't do that to our elderly. We can't do that to our citizens. So, we've got to come up with a way to implement the good parts of it without harming people. And I think that's kind of where we are.
And I do feel that Cindy and I were the two-headed dragons there for a while. And we were going, and we went to the State Department, and we were saying things. And then we started out, and she had her town meetings, that we looked like we were crazy. Well, guess what? We weren't crazy. We were telling the truth.
Right.
And I think a lot of more people now are on the bandwagon that we were right, Kenny.
And the other thing that was brought up in Mako, and you guys know way more about this than I would, they said, "We've got to watch if we're talking to the wrong people. You guys are on our side." They said, "If we want legislative changes, we need the people that pass this, they need to come up with, they want to fix it. And how do we talk to them? Is that something you guys do every day? Is that something in letters we can help you do? Or what do we do with that?"
Okay, well, there might be people in this room that'll be mad at me. The teachers' union needs to get on board and help us.
Absolutely.
And not fight us. I'm sorry, but that's the case. I mean, let's be honest.
That's very honest.
We, I think we all want our kids to have a world-class education. I love teachers. I love every teacher that taught my kids. I want them to be compensated fairly. I want them to be taken care of. But there's not a pot of money out there in the sky that's going to satisfy some people. And so, we've got to come up with a way that's fair to the taxpayer, that's fair to the citizens, that's fair to our kids, that's fair to our teachers. What is that answer? I'm not saying I have that answer, but we can't, if we keep fighting against the teachers' union and they want a certain, they want certain things, and then they're not willing to give, then I don't know how we fix the problem.
Senator Reedy?
Yeah, let me elaborate on that, too. I think Delegate Rose makes a great point. And when she's speaking about the teachers' union, it's not even specifically talking about, like, the local bargaining representative that's here in Carroll County, per se. It's really about the power that interest groups have in this process can't be understated. I have a couple of specific questions about this. I'll get to it in a minute, too, if it's okay. The reason, there's enough money in the system right now. We talk about, I know Governor Moore spoke about a season of fiscal discipline. Well, we actually had eight years of pretty good fiscal discipline, and we could continue that. There's actually enough money in the system to continue incrementally increasing education funding for a long time. Challenge is Kerwin seeks to sort of dramatically expand spending. And then, the idea is more pumping more money into education, which sounds great. But then, as we've seen there, which I know the big elephant here is the compensatory and the, which I'm sure we're going to get into. But really, if we just took a moment and said, "Wait a minute. All the counties at some level are having real trouble. AIB's still getting organized. You know, we're just now figuring out, two years in, that we need the, you know, the capital, the capital situation we're getting, you talked about getting the guidelines. If we just took a step back and said, "Let's slow everything down a little bit. Let's not have the dramatic rate of increase maybe quite so fast." This is where the point of the teachers' union comes in. There's this fear that the state, you know, the state teachers' union, the very powerful interests, it's not just them, it's other groups, too, will bring political force to bear to say, "No, no, no, you can't slow it down because that's not enough money for education." But it's like, well, actually, no, we're not saying you're going to cut money away from education. We're just saying we just need to take a little bit more of a moderate approach or keep pumping up the spending, but give more flexibility. I mean, so there's a couple of different ways we could look at it. But we do need, you know, we do need people to understand that that's part of the dynamic. I will say, a lot of us are having individual meetings with different key players in the General Assembly. Delegate Thompson's actually coming back from something he's at where he's been actually having to have some good FaceTime at a, sort of an off-site thing he was at. I've got some meetings set up. We're all individually trying to talk to members of, frankly, members of the majority party because we've got to obviously have their buy-in, and they're hearing from their locals. And so, I actually think Mako came at a great time, and this meeting comes at a great time because I do think there's, I usually am pretty pessimistic, but I actually feel like if we can continue to work together, there's an opportunity to see some things change. Now, whether we can address all of these issues, you know, I don't know. I mean, I don't know. And on the comp education issue, which we can get into, we are a little unique there. But I'm hopeful that as we continue to talk amongst ourselves in the different counties, there can be more of a, maybe an omnibus adjustment that's made this session. I mean, I can't make any promises. But I think that's what we have to work for is, but understand that that's the political dynamic. Is that slowing things down will be called cutting education, which, of course, is not what it would be. So, that's what we have to battle with.
I think the biggest understanding that's important for people to get is that if we were getting new funding and the state or the legislation was saying, "With this new funding, this is what you have to do with it," that would be easy for us. We could do that, but that's not what's happening. What's happening is they're saying, "Look at your entire budget. Redo everything. Start over." And I'll say it again, we don't have enough money in our foundation to do everything in Blueprint that it asks us to do. We just don't. And so, we're put in a position where, you know, we're having to make hard choices about what we spend that money on. Are we going to heat the buildings, or are we going to do this? Are we, you know, we don't have a lot of excess or extra in our school system. And so, I'm not able to cut things here in order to afford something over here because we've done 15 years of cutting in Carroll County Public Schools, unlike some of our neighbors in districts surrounding us. They do have some, they do have some funding that they can go to or some programs that they can go to and say, "You know, we're going to cut this entire program, and we're going to put that money into what we need to afford for Blueprint." We don't have that here.
What about the free and reduced meals bucket of money? If we had flexibility to use that across the board, how much would that help?
Tremendously. The comp ed bucket is the bucket that we are struggling with the most here. So, if we were able to take the funding that's in comp ed and use it, have it be non-restricted, that would, that would solve, gosh, a huge problem.
Prevent class sizes.
Nick, did you want to say something?
Sure. And a good example of that is this past school year, we received roughly $11 million in what I would call new money or new funding. We were able to very purposely, very strategically use that $11 million. We created 124 positions. We were able to target specifically compensatory education. We were able to do that very well. But that's a good example of new funding that was very restricted, and we were able to apply that and apply that instantly with, I think, great, great impact moving forward. But that kind of flexibility is what we need. You know, moving forward, you know, Dr. McCabe's suggestion is a great one in that new funding may could be restricted. But that current funding, we need that flexibility to be able to implement as we see fit.
I'd add that we did that because it was the right thing to do. It was the intent of the law. And if we didn't do it, that $37 million figure, I asked Brenda to put the chart up. The next document was discussion points, but it kind of goes hand in hand with mapping out the budget. If you, if you look at the chart either on the screen or in your packet for fiscal '25, this is sort of trying to estimate cost of implementation year by year over three years. If you, if you go down to the last bolded area, cost to reduce or mitigate Blueprint Fiscal Compliance, that's that part of the discussion. That's the town halls. That's the comp ed. By Dr. McCabe and Mr. Shokne spending the new FY '24 comp ed money where we know they want us to, we have to now deal with $37 million of changes in fiscal '25 instead of what would have been 48. And so, you know, there's also some other areas where we know we're a little bit out of compliance. ELL, Transitional Supplemental Instruction, a little bit in pre-K. All that could take care of itself with space. But, so that's not, that's not a new program to implement. That's what Dr. McCabe alluded to. That's the part of the blueprint where it's, you know, take all of your money you've been getting and spending, including some from them, our state money and local money, and spend it differently to comply. And so, it's not, and Cindy almost always says this, "It's not that we wouldn't want to do that." If you look back at Board of Ed budgets for 20 years, they've asked for the kinds of things that the Blueprint would say do, but we haven't been in a place where that kind of funding's been possible. We were losing population for years. We lost state aid for years, and the commissioners were having to try to make that up, et cetera, et cetera. $37 million of cuts, I believe, up to and including then closing three schools. We haven't been able to do that, but we would have. We would have wanted to do a lot of these things. Now, they're saying, "Go back and redo what you have to make that happen." So, that 37 or 39, if you want to count the other three areas at the bottom of the fiscal '25 column, that's not a new program, a new cost to implement. That's taking our existing school system and shuffling it around to comply. And, you know, if you were to look at the legislative positions or the ending of the discussion sheet, some flexibility there. And, you know, and I'm just speaking for me. Do I think they're going to change the law? No. Do I think that they have, even without legislation, the ability as the AIB through policy to say, "Okay, we get that there's something unique in Carroll County. You cut budgets for a decade. You cut 320, 300 and some odd positions during the years of cuts. You don't have a lot to move around. You have more time." Or, or just work with your new money or meet us, you know, meet us somewhere. That's different.
They could interpret it, couldn't they? Couldn't there be an interpretation of the law or a waiver without having to pass a bill?
I don't see why there couldn't be.
Yeah, yeah.
Not that I'm against passing a bill. I just, you guys, you know, John, the pitfalls of saying we're going to pass a bill.
And to be fair, that, the comp ed, that number is unique to Carroll, I believe. But I think every county has some area where they have to, you know, they have to sort of adjust resources. The difference might be, and I don't, you know, I don't want to play in other people's sandbox because I'm sure they would tell you, if you talk to your colleagues in Garrett, they'll tell you the world's ending, and they could be right there. But we, she doesn't have resources in central office that she can move to fill that $37 million gap. And other counties might have some of that. She's going to, Nick's going to have to take that out of School A and move it to School B to fiscally comply on paper. We're going to change our baseline of staffing, of student-teacher ratios, of class size to do that. And Delegate Rose, you are right, and it's clearer now than ever. It's no longer sort of us referring back to the Kerwin Commission study. They say fairly openly in the meetings and sessions, "Class size is not..." They don't believe class size is a, help me, how do I say this fairly?
They don't care.
They believe...
But just say the truth.
What they would say is, "The reason that money needs to move, that 37 million, because the kids where that money would show up need all those extra supports. The kids where those resources would move from, can 45 kids in a class can learn just fine in those community schools," is I think how they would say it.
And that is not a true statement.
I know.
And at the same time, you're trying to increase test scores of those kids.
Right.
And I've heard from teachers, they're like, "Yeah, 45 kids in my classroom. Nice try. It's not going to work. It's unmanageable."
Well, the problem is, right now, we have a lack of folks graduating from our colleges who want to be teachers.
So, tell them they get to teach 45 kids.
And that's going to go to another question that I have. So, if we, if we keep our flexibility, let's just say, if we get our flexibility, are we going to be able to pay teachers a good competitive salary and be able to fulfill, I know that's, maybe that's an impossible question.
Well...
I know that there's a lack. We've heard that for years, and I don't think any legislation's going to really fix that. But if we are able to have the flexibility, are we going to be more enabled to hire good, qualified teachers for our kids in Carroll County?
Yes. If we have more flexibility, we will then be able to put more of our funding toward the teacher scales. But I will say, you know, we, the law says that we have to start all of our teachers off at $60,000 and then go from there. Already, you know, I've got the superintendent in Howard County and some other counties saying, "Well, you know, if the law says $60,000, I'm going to start, I'm going to try to start my folks at $70,000 or $75,000." So, we will still be in a position of not being able to compete with some of our surrounding districts. This is not going to solve that problem for us.
Can I just get this straight? I'm trying to figure this out. You're saying that in fiscal '25, the additional cost to Carroll County is going to be $75 million to comply with Kerwin? Is that what this says?
Yes, sir. And let me clarify a little bit. So, the first section's down to cost to reduce or mitigate Blueprint Fiscal Compliance. All those earlier sections, salary, college career ready, pre-K, expansion, teacher time, those are our anticipated new costs in fiscal '25 to move forward with implementation.
And so, in fiscal '26, you've got... And so in fiscal twenty-six, you've got that seventy-five million plus, an extra twenty-seven million.
Correct.
And in fiscal twenty-seven, you've got those two amounts plus an additional twenty, twenty-seven million.
Yes, sir.
Okay, how much money are you, are we getting from the state to help defer some of the expenses? To phrase some of these?
Yes, sir. And I'll try to answer all of that at once. So, to, to be, to be fair, I, first of all, I say there's, these are estimates and there's some methodologies built in that I'm sure people, you know, could take issue with and that's fine. Secondly, it assumes certain things, like Ms. Savigny pointed out, it assumes moving the entire teacher scale, not, not just the starting teacher salary. So there's assumptions like that. And then, i- if things stay the way they are with sort of the, the very strict interpretation of the restricted nature of the funding, what the seventy-four million wouldn't reflect is, um, there's, I think, about seven million in their plan for the Board of Ed next year of local funding. That's not pictured here, so you could deduct that, assuming they'll, you know, meet their plan. And we would anticipate based on this year's funding, Senator, about twelve million in the foundation from the state. And, and, and the one section of the state formula that has some flexibility is the foundation. So, so you could back off, um, you could back off, you know, nineteen million roughly and say that's, that's what the balance is. But also to be fair, the thirty-seven, the last four rows, the thirty-seven, uh, one million and, and two half a millions, that's not new money and that's, that's new money from them to avoid moving all of the resources. So like, in twenty-five, we have to move the resources to be in fiscal compliance. The dollars have to follow the kids to the schools where the kids are and that's moving the comp ed money. That's the biggest number there. What we're saying here is to avoid doing that. And what we know that will bring to the, to us, to the community, you know, they'd have to be able to fund that thirty-nine million to prevent that from happening. Or, or whatever portion of that they could fund is less resources Dr. McCabe has to move in fiscal twenty-seven. Everything above that thirty-seven is new money needed to do this in the, in the most effective kind of way.
So, now you've gotten me confused.
Okay.
So, I, you had seventy-four million here, then you talked about seven million coming from local funding and twelve million from the state. That's nineteen million. So if we deduct nineteen from seventy-four, we're down to fifty-five.
Correct.
So you're saying that, that in twenty-five, Carroll County's going to come, have to come up with an additional fifty-five million dollars in order to comply with Kerwin?
I believe that's my agreement with Mr. Kyler, yes.
And that's why we all have gray hair.
And that's.
On top of what's been spent for this fiscal year.
Yes, yes.
And that's why I'm going to be taking staff from schools basically in the southern area of the county and moving them to other areas of the county. And at this point, in order for me to meet that fifty-some, uh, number you just heard, I'm going to have to, I would have to have class sizes of, gosh, in some cases sixty, in order to make that fiscally happen, which I absolutely cannot do.
It, it's harder choices than that and I'm probably stepping on Nick's toes and you can. It's not, it's class size, but it's not just class size. It's also certain offerings would have to not occur in certain schools, particularly like the high school level when you think about student choice. He wouldn't be able to offer certain sections at certain high schools. Other resources, um, and, and, and the plan's not, you know, you, I always have to say.
Does that go against the whole point of Blueprint in giving the offerings and the workforce development and offering things that will help students be equipped to be successful in the future? Isn't, it's like cross purposes?
It does and it's sort of one place where the Blueprint's competing against itself because they would say, yes, true, but the Blueprint also says these resources need to be where the students who need them most are and you don't yet have them there.
Plus, that was sort of compounded because they changed the formula, right? For the compensator, compensatory ed students.
And to, and to Dr. McCabe's earlier point, if you were saying, spend all your new money the way you're saying, that's not, yay, we've been wanting to do that for a very long time and Nick's spent eleven million this year that way. It's when you have to move your existing resources that makes it, that makes it really hard.
So, my takeaway is that Kerwin represents a huge unfunded mandate.
Yes.
And at least for Carroll County now, is that the same percent, is the same proportion of unfunded mandate for all the other counties in the state?
I think for many of the other counties and I, I think that, that, that bottom four rows, I don't know that there's another county that has something as sizable as what we're looking at with comp ed, but I think all counties have some numbers down there. But the things above, I think, are similar. And then there's some, there's some tricky, tricky aspects to the Blueprint. And if I could, I'd like to conclude talking a little bit about the foundation because I, I, I think it's important to have this conversation in this room with, with, with you all because I think you'll hear and you've already heard, well, anything else that they need to do is in the foundation. It should come out of the foundation. And they say that routinely. They also use words like, you need to reimagine. You need to rethink how your schools work. And, and I, like, if, if all of this is.
John, tell us what the foundation is.
The foundation is the, is the base beginning component of the state funding formula. It is the, uh, what do they call it now? The targeted or the main per pupil allocation per number of students.
It's a baseline.
And now there's a local and state share, cost shared between the local and state. So it's the beginning of the formula before you get into all of the targeted populations. And so they'll say, everything else you need is there. And, and let me try to give you just.
Majority's spending that.
Yes, sir.
That's the point.
I can stop. That's the point. And not only are we already spending it, we're already spending it on things that are non-negotiable or, um, or actually are Blueprint related. And so I'll give you some examples. And I, and I get that to, at like a face value to any ordinary human being, including my own family members. You look at, at our foundation, you say, wow, that's a ton of money. They, they must be right. They have all the money that they need to do anything with because the state shares a hundred and seventeen million and the local shares a hundred and one. So you get, what is it, two-hundred-and-eighteen million dollars. How could they need more money than that? So things not imagined in the Blueprint, not part of the Blueprint, half of pupil transportation is not funded by the state. That's sixteen million dollars for buses that are running today to Senator West Point. These things are being spent. Our payroll, the Blueprint, where they're, where the Blueprint's specifically sending us money in the, in the career ladder column is for the career ladder components of the add-ons for National Board Certification. The rest of payroll is coming out of the foundation or from them. Our payroll for, for an organization our size of almost four thousand employees is two-hundred-and-forty-one million. So if, just that example has more than spent the foundation. So, and, but payroll's coming out of the other columns as well. Uh, fixed charges, including pension, ninety-one million for active employees, eight million for retirees. Not part of the Blueprint, not thought about in the Blueprint. Maintenance of, of the buildings, thirty-eight million. Technology, eight-point-seven million. Security, two-point-one million. Annual inflation, somewhere around five million. You are way beyond the foundation. So reimagining schools means what are you going to cut or move in order to implement this? That's what it means. And so it's sort of, it's, it's, obviously it's a bit of a pet peeve, but it's driving me hysterical when they say, well, you just need to think about it differently and you can apply for this grant and we'll send you a helpful facilitator. It's almost as if the belief is you're just resistant to change and you don't want to do this. And maybe that's true, but maybe it's.
There could be some school systems where that's the case. That's not been us.
And maybe that's part of human nature, but it, it's also legitimately true to say, what am I supposed to cut to make this happen?
April, go ahead.
I still, I still want to know, and I've gone through Blueprint and I was on Ways and Means and I dealt with this for four years. I have PTSD from it. I still want to know, and I discussed this with former delegate Susan Krebs, the accountability measures and the outcomes. There is still, we're going to spend all this money, we're going to do all these things. I am still unclear.
There's not any.
There's not any. There, there is still no accountability and finding out by doing all of these things. How are we going to measure the success? How are we going to know that our kids are having better outcomes? So, do you, any of you have any of those answers? Because I've read the legislation, I've gone through it and I don't have any answers. Do any of you?
We have no answers.
Academic standard tied to any of this money? Not one.
That's been our concern the whole time, is that there's really no accountability.
I just felt it, I just needed to.
Yeah, I think, I think what the fear is, the metrics will show you that scores are going down. Uh, I mean, so I think fortunately the word is getting out that Blueprint is just, it's a, it's a funding and, uh, it's a funding mandate. And it's, it's called an educational program, but that's exactly what it is. And when you, as an elected official, when you're looking at something that you honestly feel is going to hurt your school system, not help it, you can only hope, and that's not a good strategy, but you can only hope that others around the state see that for what it's worth. Six months ago, I had a conversation with some elected officials from Montgomery County and I talked to them about this and I explained to them that, how we felt about Blueprint. And their take at the time, and they might have changed their tune since then, was that Blueprint was going to help them. But when I explained to them that I knew it was going to hurt Carroll County's school system, they're responsible saying, you need to make sure you tell people that. And, and my only hope now is that enough people are going to have that conversation because I truly, truly believe that. And as an elected official, how in the world can you increase funding for something that you think's going to hurt kids? I have two kids in the school system and we're all products of the Carroll County school, school system. So how do you, how do you, how do you reconcile that?
And you're trying to do what's right for all students. Um, and not, I don't, I'm not going to say counties' names, but one county, unless it's changed, they're going to close middle schools to try to afford this. That can't be good for the overall student. One county on the eastern shore at Mako consistently said, we can't fund this. I just want to throw up my arms and say, we can't do this, forget it. And, and, uh, they're totally frustrated. So we're not the worst. And, 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 I know, I know. It, it's sad, but, um, we might be in the bottom couple. But, um, it, I just, and it's frustrating because, and Commissioner Rossing couldn't be here and he told me a couple of things I had to say and he told me a couple of things he hoped I wouldn't say.
But you'll say them anyway.
We're losing local control on so many levels already. And, and we've got people that want more control statewide, which is backwards to making this work and backwards to what Mako says of, we want local control. And, and, uh, and, uh, he'll tell us over there, while we, while we've always proud, been proud of local control in the school system, Maryland by law is top-down. So how do we fight that?
Well, and not only is Maryland law top-down, and you're familiar with the provisions that we've discussed before. You saw last year, the legislation that was introduced to make it even more so.
Yep.
Speaking of, of, so on compensatory, because from a solution standpoint, our goal, one of the goals, there's several issues here, but on compensatory, trying to get flexibility. We've talked about that. So what, what, what can we present? And if you, if you need to get back to us with something more official, but what can we present as, hold us accountable, give us flexibility? What, what are we going to say? Hold us accountable for X. That's how you'll know we're spending the money wisely. Because it's really funny because there's actually some jurisdictions in the state that if you had told me in a vacuum without knowing all this like three years ago, we're going to put everything in buckets and make sure they're spending the money on X, Y, and Z. I'd say, well, that sounds like a good idea. Because you don't think about it, not so much here, but you think about it, you hear about common problems with certain jurisdictions. But, but really that's not the right way to do things because even in that situation, it's still better to have local control. Ideally, you hold your local people accountable, but, which we do here. So what is, what can we pitch as, you know, as this is the accountability measures you could look, we, we will do if we get this flexibility?
Student achievement, right? Yeah, student achievement. Look at those MCAP, uh, scores.
MCAP scores?
Yes, that's what, because that's really the only way to compare us to all of the other districts in the state of Maryland.
Is there anything else? Because I'm curious, because you also get this whole thing about how testing isn't, isn't a fair way to judge achievement, which I, I don't, I, I agree, but I don't agree. You have to have some kind of measure.
You could, I mean, you could look at the percentage of our students who graduate.
There you go.
Uh, you could look at the number of our students who, um, meet the college and career standards.
AP courses?
AP courses.
What do you have in?
That's good, those are all good suggestions.
In what's being required to spend money on?
Teacher ratios, I think are a good measurement.
Do, do the things you're saying affect those students as much also? Or are there different measures that show you've been doing what's right for those students already?
I, I think we need to be able to show that some of our underrepresented students are meeting the same rigorous standards as all of our other student groups.
And that's what I actually mean too, is not just accountability for the whole system, but show, we can show that for these students that would fall under the compensatory education, that we are meeting or beating the standards.
Yes.
And one other question about if we could, if we don't get this flexibility and this doomsday scenario happens. You mentioned how you'd have to move teachers, a lot of them, from the southern part of the. I thought we had, I thought if there are Title I schools down there, why would, or is it more that there's not as many down there?
We don't have any down there.
I thought there was an elementary school that was still Title I.
Mm-mm.
If the, how many students did concurrent enrollment last year, do you know? Or how many, how many students?
Total enrollment?
Yeah, concurrent.
Twenty-five thousand.
Do you know?
Oh, dual enrollment.
Dual enrollment.
Look that up, the total number. We'll, I'm just, I'm just interested to know, like, if a southern high school has sixty people in a classroom, how many of those, how extreme does that number get? And I know you all are now responsible to fund it. How does that change the calculus of parents coaching their kids on what to do?
Right.
So that's a whole nother conversation. I feel like it's talking to another area.
That's a great question. Yes, ma'am.
There we are.
You're on.
I have one question. Um, it's, I'm not sure if this is a question that's already been answered, but how much do we expect dual enrollment to somewhat, if any, offset class sizes that we're expected to see?
Honestly, not sure. You know, we are in the process of, of developing, um, part of the Blueprint is a, a pathway to an associate's degree or sixty credits. And that's a very, that's a very rigorous process to, to do that as a, as a high school student. So we're not sure yet as to what the interest will be from our students and from our families to participate in that. It will mean the vast majority of the students today as juniors and seniors will not be spent on campus, obviously, if we're.
What funding are you getting from the state to do that?
We get five-hundred-and-seventeen dollars per every child deemed to be college and career ready. That's what goes into all of college and career ready, not just dual enrollment, but advanced placement or, um, career and technical education service.
Like you're not sure what it's going to cost you.
We don't know what it's going to. We just don't know what the interest is going to be, um, in the future.
Classes and books.
And when we speak about the Blueprint kind of competing with itself in different areas, dual enrollment is one of those areas because, for instance, right now, we have teachers within our high schools who teach dual enrollment, who are our teachers and they teach dual enrollment courses in our schools so that our students don't have to leave and go over to Carroll Community. That's going to have to end at some point because of the sixty-forty, um, work planning time split. Because if we have our teachers teaching our courses and dual enrollment courses, you know, that creates a, an issue where they're teaching something that we may not have to be teaching. And so in order to maintain that sixty-forty split, it may not be possible. So, um, so we're facing those kinds of really tough decisions where some of our current practices, we feel are, are very beneficial to our students, but we have to take that away in order to meet another requirement.
You, you were doing that in cooperation.
It makes Blueprint at odds with itself.
Yes.
You were doing that in cooperation with the community college.
Yes.
But who's that going to hurt when you have to stop it? The ones without transportation, the ones, the kids are going to hurt.
Yes, the kids, the kids who can't transport themselves to Carroll Community will not have, not have great access to dual enrollment courses.
And our current structure for dual enrollment, in my opinion, is working and works well. In the end, what I don't want is a system that doesn't work as well as the one we have now through a mandate. And I'm worried that that's a, a very real reality of where we're going to end up in that we'll, we'll implement the Blueprint, but in the end, I, will we have a system that's better than what we have right now?
To put, to put some numbers to it, Delegate Stonka, we, when we closed out fiscal twenty-three, and again, remember the building the airplane in flight analogy, the, the board had to approve of, of a year in transfer from, you know, surplus in one category to another to round out dual enrollment with, with college. This year, we budgeted a million and partly because we anticipate participation going up and partly because college fees get added to what the Board of Ed has to pay. And then in twenty-five, we're sort of working with an estimate of another five-hundred, another one-hundred-thousand and twenty-six and we're assuming it flattens out after that. None of these estimates or working numbers would account for transportation if the AIB were to say, you have to now transport all the kids there if Nick can't offer the same, same number. And then I, I want to give you one last example sort of relative to the Foundation And then I want to give you one last example, sort of relative to the foundation, because I think this will resonate with any delegation anywhere in Maryland. Special education. Special education is its own funding column, its own restricted area of the blueprint. In fiscal '24, this fiscal year, the combined shares are just about even, 13 million roughly from the state and local. We're budgeted to spend 51 million in special ed. And I don't think that that would be different in any county, and I think many counties proportionally would be much higher. And Mr. Shokne will come to me frequently over the years and say, I need more in special ed, John, not less in special ed. So it's 51 because that's what we have to spend, not because that's what we would want to spend. So we are spending $25 million beyond the share requirements of the blueprint in special ed, and I think every county would be there or higher. So back to the foundation, where everything else is supposed to come from, including, and this is a great example, including if you want to do more than the blueprint, or if it costs you more in the blueprint, or if you can't reimagine your schools enough to do it a different, cheaper way. You know, there's an area that I think you would find commonality in all 24 counties, where school systems are already spending well above the foundation, or well above the shares in the restricted area, want to, need to, need to spend more, but it's all, at the end of the day, it's all coming from the same place. It's coming from the foundation or from them, which is why that number's 74-54, if you back out anticipated new money.
And I think it also stands, I'm sorry.
Go ahead, April.
So when we go back and we talk at the state level, so if there is a, almost like a point system, so if we can demonstrate what we're doing above and beyond in these certain areas, like you just mentioned, special education, is there a way for you to give us that kind of data? Like, we're already doing all of these things above and beyond, we're already doing in all these different areas, to give us, I guess, ammunition, just to say, you know, like, okay, so we're doing all of these things, give us the flexibility that we're asking for, because we are excelling and doing so well in all of these columns. Is that something that you could provide to us?
Absolutely.
I'm not saying that it's going to work, I'm just throwing it out as an idea. In federal contracting, you know, you get points for, as you know, you get points for, you know, how well you do in certain areas. So like, that would be, I think, maybe helpful.
And maybe even provide opportunity cost.
They can tell Mabe, we can tell Mako, all those same talking points.
Exactly.
And maybe even give them, and even give them points of opportunity cost. In other words, we can't fund these things because we're forced to shift money over. That might be good as well.
I think one of the biggest things has been the accountability piece. I mean, we've seen on the news, you have one system, they are not having any good outcomes whatsoever, and they're getting the most in the state in funding. When you have other areas who are outperforming, doing the best they can, and they're not getting any additional funding, there's something wrong there. You're punishing people who are doing well, and you're not doing what needs to be done for those who are not.
You're paying your worst employee to highest salary, and your best employee to lowest salary.
Got it. And I think that's one of the biggest things that needs to be taken back to Annapolis, is, look, something has got to be done here. Enough is enough.
Because my fear is, and Josh, you're going to be on the front lines of that in your committee, if you're going to have jurisdictions coming and asking for special bills and special funding, you know, to account for that, and it really needs to be an equal playing field. I mean, that's the whole point of the entire thing, is we're supposed to give every kid in the state of Maryland a good and decent education. I don't think there's anybody sitting here at this table, anybody in this room, that doesn't agree with that. It can't be winners and losers, and Carroll County certainly cannot be the losers based on, you know, faulty legislation. And unfortunately, it looks like we just got to, we have to fight for our peace, and we have to fight for our kids, and I know that we will, sorry.
And there is data, there is the, the data is out there for that, too. There is the data to show that.
I'm sorry, Ms. Tagley, I'm sorry.
You're good. Go ahead, Joe.
I was going to say, for the sake of context here, too, and I think this is incredibly important as well, it's not just a question of incorrigibility from the county that we refuse to accede to the funding, right? You know, looking ahead to fiscal year '25 from the county side of things, we're already $70 million in deficit beginning the budget for fiscal year '25, and that's why we started this past month going through beginning budgeting meetings. You know, we're looking at a number of major things coming, or in process now. We have the Department of Fire and EMS, which is being implemented. There's a storm that we just went through demonstrates the absolute need to continue to implement that, to fully see that out. You know, we had over 120 roads closed at one point, we had over 400 calls coming into the emergency system at one point as well. You know, the sheriffs and state's attorney that are beginning the demolition of what will become their new safety campus, and they are dealing with a number of mandates from the state, including the way that video evidence is reviewed, that's also necessitating the expanded facilities that we're having to construct for them. We also, the county workforce that we have, we really do have a bare minimum county workforce, they're wonderful people, but being able to retain them, to continue to provide services that we do, is also difficult. And then, of course, you have normal cost increases, inflation, maintenance and upkeep, supply chain issues, in addition to blueprints on top of it. And I think for our purposes, having that context is better to understand, because it's not, it's not just like the, any number of these counties are sitting around saying, well, we have all of these additional funds that we just refuse to give to the Board of Education. The reality is that all these counties are strapped. And knowing that we have our own unique set of circumstances, a unique set of challenges, I think certainly demonstrates and evinces that it's not a question of incorrigibility or simply refusing to adhere to that same political mindset that certain people have. I don't know, I mean, you can't argue that going into things, I think, but having the context behind all of this is certainly important. I mean, we moved heaven and earth to be able to give the school system extra money, and it's not that they didn't need it, they definitely needed it. It's, you know, going into this coming fiscal year '25, it's going to be an even bigger challenge than this current year is, was, still is.
So can I make a suggestion? I love the idea of the points. The suggestions on the legislative positions are very general. It's pretty tough for us to go down to legislators who are committee chairs or vice chairs with just general stuff like this. And I think it's important that Carroll County not go alone. It has to be in tandem with other counties. So here's my question, between Dr. McCabe and John and Nick, do you all know counterparts in small counties and in the larger counties? Could you put together a little working group of, say, four or five counties, and come and sit down and have counsel at the table with you, and go through this, and come up with what you want? Take the existing Kerwin bill we passed a couple of years ago, how would you change that bill? Come up with at least a rough draft of what you would do. And if we can get Carroll County and a smaller county, but most importantly, a bigger democratic county on board with this.
Howard County.
Take Howard County, it's a great democratic county. And collectively, we could take this down to legislative leaders in Annapolis and say, this is a multi-county effort, and this is what we think we need in order to make this succeed. You can wrap into it the idea of points, giving the counties points for various, meeting certain benchmarks. Give it back to us. That's something tangible we can advocate for in Annapolis, rather than just general language about added flexibility.
So some of those discussions are already happening frequently. I was on a meeting earlier today where something very similar to that is happening, and certainly Mabe and the Superintendent's Association, which is PZAM, will be, he likes that.
My favorite acronym.
They'll be developing very specific legislative positions in the early fall. We presented this with, I presented this with the word draft, in all caps and underline, because the Board of Ed hasn't had a chance to formally act on legislative positions this fall, but they certainly can at any upcoming meeting, and we can do that subject to their approval. And I do think that there are places of commonality, and I do think that they could get specific. And I do think that, you know, some of those examples of the foundation of special ed, I hear it everywhere. It's no longer just Carroll, I hear it all over the place. And there's this realization, and I wouldn't say it's dawning, it's dawned, that at the end of the day, something has got to be cut. You can call it reallocate, you can call it reimagine, something's got to go. And if you go to the, back through that list of more than we are required to spend on special ed, we're not going to cut that transportation, we're not going to cut that, we're not going to cut facilities. So what's left would be, and I guess this is where it gets ugly, what's left are the things nobody wants to talk about, like extracurriculars or...
Class size.
Moving, yes, moving resources or cutting those kind of programs that aren't part of the blueprint. And A, it's not realistic, because people hate it. And B, if you add all that up, it's not enough money. There's, you know, we could cut all the athletics in Carroll County, it wouldn't make a dent in that number, it just doesn't work that way. So I think, I think we can do all of those things, and I think, you know, to the points Senator Reedy made earlier, I'm not always sure if it needs to be a legislative remedy, because I think those are going to be hard to come by. I've never been clear why it can't be a policy remedy either, so if leadership or delegations are leading...
Maybe this work group could say, hey, this would need to be legislative, this would need to be, because it could be that it's part of an overall, I think all of this is going to be part of overall negotiations, but if we have specifics, it will, you know, if we can get more...
And for the sake of some examples, just if they matter, with the risk of these haven't been discussed publicly with the Board of Ed yet, certainly we would like as much flexibility as we could get, and so whether that's in restricted areas or elsewise, certainly we need reasonable timelines. But we almost need, what in my mind, I've started calling like, a good faith, hold harmless. So if in the greatest staffing shortage, one of the three greatest staffing shortages of the last 100 years, if we just can't implement a program because we simply couldn't hire enough people to do it, it wasn't because we didn't try to hire and we just couldn't do it, please don't take 25% of our funding. So there could be sort of a good faith, hold harmless on that element, and there'd be other examples. If we can't expand pre-K, the board share, the public share pre-K, because we need to build classrooms to do it, but it takes three years to get funding and build classrooms, please don't take 25% of our funding that year. And I'm not sure that needs to be legislative, but it wouldn't hurt if it was legislative.
So I have a question about that. So the punitive part, where is that coming from? Is it the AIB? And how has your...
Because that wasn't in the bill, was it?
Yeah.
It was? I just wanted, since I've been saying about, is that in the bill? I read the entire bill, I read the entire amended bill, but it was like 800 pages.
It's new.
We'll email.
And we didn't vote for it, so, but I don't remember every detail, so.
So with the formation of the AIB, and they did, so they did waive that, or they did move that one year, they recognized that they started late...
Okay, one year, but what's the outlying, like, next year?
Every year.
What is the punitive process to punish us, to come after us?
Every fiscal year, forever, under the blueprint, every local Board of Ed begins with 25% of its new state aid withheld, until the AIB approves the local Board of Ed's implementation plan for that prior year. So we all just got approved at July 27, some conditionally. And I'll tell you, like, if you want to look for, your colleagues in Queen Anne's would be a great group to reach out to, I think. I don't know the, I don't know the politics there anymore, but Queen Anne's was a conditionally approved plan. They were conditionally approved because they had not yet met the initial 10% overall increase to teacher salary that needed to occur between 19 and 24. And if you listen to the discussion, or at least I listened to the discussion that day into my ear, it was a little bit concerning, because it reflected ill will towards Queen Anne's County from members of the AIB, but no acknowledgement that they didn't fail to meet it because the superintendent didn't want to. They didn't fail to meet it because the union, I think it was actually part of an impasse proceeding, but their negotiated agreement and their funding didn't get them there. But they didn't pass a resolution in Queen Anne's County saying, we hereby will not try to meet that 10% requirement. But some of the discussion was, well, we'll reluctantly approve it conditionally right now, which also I think misunderstood what the law actually says as to when the 10% is due, but that's another issue. But if it comes back next year, I won't approve it. Well, what good does it do to take 25% of their funding if they didn't have enough funding to meet it in the first place?
Right, so that's basically my point, is that every year, we're going to be under this microscope of arbitrary punishment.
And not because you didn't meet the right test scores, but because you didn't spend enough money. That's what really...
That's exactly right, that's the...
That's a big problem, right there.
And the accountability has to be on the student achievement, and maybe not the test scores, but some sort of proxy for student achievement. It has to be based on that, not on, did you spend this amount of money in this way? That's...
Or they're just mad at Carroll County, which has happened, once in a while.
Is it safe to say that majority of the school boards will come up short? And if that happens, practically speaking, what is AIB going to do to all those school boards? I'm a bit of a rebel, and I think all of you should stick together and push back against this. I'm actually a strong advocate of taking it to court. I think you guys have a good case of suing this, getting injunction to stop the darn thing.
Well, I don't think we are going to be able to do a pushback, except for money, because I know the guys over on the other side of the street are not going to hand us $74 million next year. So if we're not being non-conformist, the money's not going to be there, and not only in our county.
That's precisely what I'm getting at.
And that's where it's going to be all over the state. So, yeah, so everyone, most counties are going to be in that same spot.
That's why I think it's a great opportunity right now.
To work together.
I think there's opportunity to get it fixed. I, you know, we can talk later, if they don't want to fix it, then I think, you know, that's a conversation each body that's represented here has to, you know, think about.
And that's what Commissioner, Commissioner Rossing did say, that Mako is going to make a strong statement, and, you know, certainly, I know we'll certainly be in agreement.
But it's interesting, at Mako, Kent County is ready to slash their wrists. Their comment was, Queen Anne's had it made, they're walking through this easy, and now you say, they didn't do so well either.
No.
They almost didn't get approved.
Yeah, so it's just, it's strange.
I think momentum is on our side, like, so kudos to staff, right? Like, Carroll County, and thanks to all of you guys, were ahead of the curve in understanding the serious implications of Kerwin. You know, at first, nobody argues with the intent of the blueprint. Nobody argues with the intent of it, but the devil is in the details of the implementation of it. And you guys were on the leading edge of trying to understand what this all meant and what the implications were. And people were behind us, and they were saying, oh, you guys are crazy, or you're just pushing back, or you're behind the eight ball, you know, like, none of that is true. The fact is, we are on the leading edge of it.
They were telling the truth.
But now, and, you know, and we were able to get the commissioners on board, understanding, you guys clearly understand it, because you've lived it for longer than we have, right? But Mako is starting, other jurisdictions are starting to step up to the line and say, we're having the same problems. Mako is on board now, in general, you're going to have a letter from all the jurisdictions. I guess I would say, kind of getting back to Senator Reedy's point of looking at solutions, right? Like, what is the best path forward? Now that the momentum is moving in the right direction, where are the pressure points? Where are the best, what are the best ways for us to put that pressure on to get, to further, to advance the ball, right? So in terms of, is it, is it that, you know, we look, ask for local courtesy, or we ask for a waiver of certain things, or we ask for a hold harmless type of approach? Or is it basically banning together with as many jurisdictions? Do we want it to be Carroll County-focused, or do we want to ban together with as many other jurisdictions?
Remember, the political power in Maryland is in the large counties in central Maryland, Montgomery County, Prince George's County, Baltimore City, Baltimore County, to a lesser extent, Howard County and Anaronto County. Those counties collectively have a majority of the delegates and a majority of the state senators. So if you can't, if you don't get them on your side, and if the teachers' union is against you, you're cooked. So the critical thing is to find like, counties with like problems that fall into that pool, Howard County is one of them.
And I would argue that the most important county in our area, in our area in Annapolis, for, at least for the House.
One thing to keep in mind, though, and we talk about this in PZAM every time we meet, is, yes, we have some things in common that are untenable about Blueprint, but Carroll County is pretty much alone in our compensatory education issue. And so that's why I keep talking about the push for less restriction in our funding in general, because if we could get that, then it doesn't matter if Howard County doesn't have the same comp ed issue as we do. If we could just get less restriction across the board, we would be helped.
So really, we need to try to work in tandem with other counties on the overall issues that we've talked about, because if we're able to get more flexible, it might be that, hey, we need some flexibility, different counties need different flexibilities in different places, but overall, if there was a analysis, a hold harmless, it would help us. I think if there is some sort of omnibus Kerwin, they won't call it a fix, but Kerwin upgrade, Kerwin upgrade, enhancement, servicing, a service agreement.
Enhancement, I like that.
Then there's an opportunity also for us to say, okay, can we get help? We have this very specific issue, but hey, good news, it doesn't change the bottom line. That's the best thing we have about the comp ed thing, is we're not asking you to give us more money to fix it, we're actually saying, we're fine with the money. more money to fix it, we're actually saying, we're fine with the money, we don't need more money, I'm sure we'd take more money, we don't need more money, we just need the ability to do this. And if any other county happens to be in this situation, they also could take advantage of this. So, it's a combination of factors. It's nice, though, to have like, a sort of a kumbaya, this is gonna help a whole bunch of people, and by the way, can we throw this in, and then there may be another county that need to throw something else in, but that's the idea. The reason we talk about, do we need a bill or not, is, and Senator West will all tell, all of us will tell you, saying, I'm gonna go down and pass a bill, you know, you may or may not be able to, especially about something so complex. So, it's more, it's, sometimes you'll put a bill in, and it's gonna end up being folded, parts of it will get folded into the overall effort. So, we just need, we've been talking about this, but we're gonna, like I said, a lot of us are either have had or are about to have meetings with key players, and we're gonna continue to try to, as things come together. But the Mako thing could not come at a better time, because it's like on everybody's radar. And frankly, Governor Moore has talked about, he talked about needing to have fiscal discipline, that it's a great example of, this is part of that, so.
And you mentioned Mako, and it's tough with getting a group of counties together. A year ago, Mako would've said that, I think. We all have the same needs, and they even made the statement, well, Kerwin's just trying to create the best school possible for the state of Maryland. And to his credit, Ed Rossi said, that doesn't exist. The perfect school in Anarundale isn't the perfect school, and Carroll isn't the perfect school in Frederick, and they were lukewarm about it. Well, now they're very much local control, we need that. So, if you get, and Harrah County probably isn't one, but surrounding counties to say, we all agree we need this, but Carroll County needs compensatory allowance. Anarundale, and they must have something they need that maybe you don't. And maybe if we can come up with six things that different counties want too, that Carroll County, you know, I don't care about, but if you fight for me, I'll fight for you, kinda deal.
Would any jurisdictions argue with more flexibility, like basically taking comp ed or other pieces and putting more in the foundation, and just having that any new funds from the state have to be spent in a, in a, new funds have to be spent this way, that's fine, but just take, just have much more in the foundation. Would any jurisdictions argue with that?
I would not imagine they would. I mean, every county is different. That's why this one-size-fits-all approach, it never works, you know, because every single county is different. And I think that the mutual fear of the punitive part has brought everybody, I think, maybe to the table. You know, I mean, I think that the idea that this board is going to, you know, assign a reduction of education funding, I mean, Justin and I talked about this, like, you know, how's that gonna play? Oh, we're not gonna give your kids money to go to school?
Yeah, I honestly...
I mean, it's just...
Doesn't play.
I don't think it's, well, this is not, this is, no, 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 you're, I mean, I think conceptually, I hope we don't have to come down to it. I would really think the state would like to avoid a fight where they have multiple jurisdictions where they're withholding money when constitutionally we're required, the state is required constitutionally to fund a fair and equitable education. It's in our constitution. With that said, hopefully, I would hope that the goal would be to try to find a way for them, they would try to find a way to avoid it. Some of this is on how it gets framed. You know, with our partnership that might be either, I don't know who's in the room, or if people are gonna be watching or listening, our partners and our bargaining units here locally, really understanding that $37 million, that's money that could be going to help make sure we keep teacher salaries going up, and also that teachers are not working in conditions where they're teaching 47 kids in a class. So, making that point to the statewide bargaining unit representatives, I think we gotta all, we're all in this together. So, I think all of that is, it's all a factor.
I just think it's a shame that we're forcing our local governments to chip in a lot more funds and the opportunity cost. I mean, we can't keep libraries open in Carroll County on Sundays. It's crazy. We, you know, our libraries haven't gotten more staffing or raises. That's the opportunity cost we're losing. And that's that our kids can leverage that on a Sunday or a Saturday or a summer. But there's other things that we could be spending our money on, and just forcing local jurisdictions, in our case, 60% of the cost, it's just, it's just really sad. But I really appreciate you guys coming out, hearing us, partnering with us, because there are some real fiscal issues that folks just don't understand.
And I'd like to take the time to thank everybody in the room. I think this has been great conversation.
Thank you all.
And we all need to work together, and we're here for one, one purpose, students of Carroll County. And...
Ms. Herbert, before we adjourn, could we kind of just say, okay, what specifically are the action items, right? Like, what can we, what can we get, you guys? Do you need it framed up in a way that, that we think that other jurisdictions wouldn't argue with?
Again, I think, to the extent you can be more specific as to, in terms of what you want, rather than more general, the more specific is the better. Because when we go to talk to the people who run these committees, none of whom are Republicans, none of whom are in this room, just going and talking generally, we want more flexibility, doesn't give much to go on. But to the extent that you can come up with more details about exactly how it's gonna work, that's what we need.
Legislative, like, how it would work to fix legislative. Some stuff isn't legislative, but this doesn't...
And what's the timing?
And I think just some data that I asked you for as far as, and I already saw you right now.
Need some notes, yeah.
You know, what we are doing and doing well, and how much we are going above and beyond, I think, gives us additional credibility in, you know, what we're doing here in Carroll. I think that can be helpful. I don't know that that's necessarily legislation, it's just part of the picture.
At the county level and at the Title I level? Oh, yeah, that's a good point.
Yeah, that's great.
Yes.
And timeframe.
And, yeah, what is the timeframe? Because, I mean, clearly you wanna have this information well in advance of session beginning, so you can start laying the groundwork. What is ideal timing for you to have this?
Sooner the better. If you can get it to us by October 1st, October 15th.
That's okay with that.
Once we get into Thanksgiving, you're in the holiday season, it's harder to set up meetings. But late October, early November is a great time to sit down out of session and have serious conversations with people.
And you, you guys are meeting people all the time.
Yeah.
So, so even pieces of it sooner rather than later would help you for your next meeting.
This is, this is actually, this information is helpful.
This is very helpful.
I think, because I, you know, we've, different ones of us have meetings coming up, and I think really understanding, I think I understood the comp thing pretty well walking in here, but understanding how, more how it all relates together is good. So, I've got some information that I need. I think as we, as we get, in some cases, like, you know, you meet with somebody, and then they're like, okay, you give them a sense of the overall thing, then is when we need the specifics. So, those of us that are talking with folks in the coming couple of weeks, we've got what we need, but we'll need to follow up with the specifics. So, yeah, definitely if we get something by the end of September, that's really helpful as we try to start breaking those things down.
And I wanna add, too, that we are in the minority of the legislature, and no matter what you give us, we can't carry and penetrate that institution unless we have support of delegations from those other jurisdictions. We need to circle the wagons, you know, we need to strengthen our numbers. And I'd like to state, too, that what's sad is, this is the institution that gave us the state college funding, and we've seen where that went. It's a total failure. And it has to do with projecting numbers into the future that you really have no control over. And this is another case of that happening. And even if we do comply with this, I believe it will be a failure, and that's what's so sad about all this. All this time and energy we're putting into this is not directed to the education and well-being of our children. And I just wish us all the best as we go through it. And I want you all to be empathic and understand to the situation we have. We only represent 27% of both chambers of the General Assembly, so it's extremely critical that we get help and support from those other jurisdictions, even if they're run by majority party delegations. If they are facing the same hurdles that we have to overcome and feel the same pain and pushback from their constituents, we can come together as a coalition and push back on this. So, it's very critical that you guys work with your counterparts in other jurisdictions to help us out, and we can cobble together some sort of coalition. And that's our only real hope to have success down there. And I wanna thank you all for putting these packages together, they're very well put together and informative, so thank you.
Yeah, thank you very much, all of you. So, anyway, thanks again, and gentlemen, we will see you all in October in another joint commissioners' meeting. So, and it's, I do believe it's here this time, so...
A home game?
Yep, home game, yep. So, thank you all, and I really do appreciate it. And we are always available if you have any questions. We really are, because we have got to work on this together. But the good thing is, we're not in it alone this time. So, thank you all, thank you all in the back, and have a great evening.
God bless everybody.
Thank you.
Yes.
Thank you.
Nice seeing you guys.